One second.
This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, this is the Virtual Board of Selectmen for Friday, April 3rd. At this time, all participants will be muted. The meeting will be closed until new attendees. As indicated on tonight's agenda, we will be inviting people for public comment to get in line to speak. US send an email request sensor comment at town.harwich dot MA dot US will be taken anywhere they were received. I've already got two requests to speak. Those emails might be sent at any time. Mr. Valentine, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Scott. I'll take this opportunity to call to order the Harwich Board of Selectmen's meeting for April 3rd, 2020. I'm going to take a roll call since we have three more conferences so people know who's on this meeting. I'll start with the Board of Selectmen. Don?
I'm here.
Michael?
I'm here.
Ed?
Star six, Ed.
I'll move on to Steve and Ed, you can weigh in when you hear this. You're here, okay. And Steve? Steve, can you hear?
Yeah, I'm here.
We also have in attendance Chief David Gilmet, Chief of Police, and Megan Eldridge, Board of Health, and Joe Powers, of course, our interim Town Administrator. And Joe, at this point, I would turn it over to you. Joe, now you're muted.
There we go. Sorry, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm trying to utilize my iPad and so far, so very unsuccessful. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to do a very brief update as it relates to COVID-19 and then turn it over to our Public Health Director. Megan, I'm going to cover some of the topics that you had mentioned earlier very briefly. Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, I'm going to be giving an update under the TA report regarding the resumption of recycling at the recycling center. It is COVID-19 related, but pretty straightforward as to how we're going to handle that. So I'd rather get into a more in-depth description of that later in the meeting. And I do want to say that folks may be seeing around town that access has been restricted to certain areas. I know that Brooks Park, the gates have been locked and efforts will be made to remove the netting. It's my understanding that the nets had not yet been removed, but those nets will be removed in short order. And unfortunately, we need to do that to affect social distancing and inadvertent congregating. We've been relying on the better efforts of folks, but we've received some complaints about that. So the certain areas are locked as it relates to courts and nets and rims and things like that will be removed so that any temptation's been removed. Beyond that, I will hand it over now to Megan for a more in-depth COVID-19 update.
Thanks, Joe. Good evening, everybody. So today's numbers are again higher than they were yesterday. Barnstable County has reported a total of 314 cases in the county. Just looking at the mass.gov website, it looks like Barnstable County experienced three deaths in the last 24 hours related to COVID. In the state, there's more than 10,000 positive cases, 10,402. And of those, that's we're up by 1,436. So every, every day this week, we've increased each day. So going from 700 plus earlier in the week and then yesterday, we were 1,100 from the day before. And today, we're, we're 1,400 up from the day before. So every day we're, we're climbing, we are going up that, up that curve. We're, we're kind of climbing it pretty steeply right now. So it's very important for people to understand that we aren't even near the top of the mountain yet. So we, we need to maintain what we're doing and really be strict on the social distancing. We want to promote people staying at home as much as possible, only going out for those essential items, grocery shopping, medicine. And also, we want to make sure people are aware that there are services that you can get through the town or the county. There's volunteers that are able to deliver food, do shopping. There's, there's a lot of services. We have a few of them on our website, but Barnstable County Health and Environment has even more resources for social services, even if you're not elderly or in a specific economic bracket. There are options for people to remain in their homes while they're quarantined or isolated or if they're just want to stay home, there's, there's options for people to stay home and have food and supplies delivered to you. Yesterday, the governor's press conference did mention that a surge is expected in Massachusetts in the next three weeks, sometime between April 10th and 20th. That's who, we can't really say for sure if that's going to happen or not, but it's pretty likely that the way the models are looking. So don't be surprised if the state comes out with more strict stay-at-home advisories or stay-at-home orders, just to try to eliminate more people from being outside of their homes. Those casual interactions, whether you're just stopping by the grocery store or picking up a coffee at a convenience store, those are the interactions that can spread the virus. So we want to be sure to limit our exposure as much as possible. In today's conference with the governor, they talked a lot about contact tracing. And I wanted to assure the public that we already are doing the basics of contact tracing once we have a positive case. We, we contracted the Visiting Nurse Association and their process is to contact the positive case, find out who their close contacts are. Those are the people that spent more than 15 minutes with them in a, in a closed space within that six foot. They do ask who their employers were and, and try to find out if they had any close contacts through their, their daily living. And then the VNA does contact those close contacts. So they're doing that next step to alert the close contacts that they should be in self-quarantine. The governor has announced that they are putting in place a new system for extensive contact tracing. So that's more of an in-depth dive to contact tracing. They, they spend more time on the phone with these positive cases and the contacts to find commonalities where they may have all been at the same grocery store, the same church, or the same convenience store. And they look for clusters of areas where cases are. So we are doing what we need to do to contact the immediate close contacts. But that next step over the next week will be most likely being assigned a person from the state to help us do that deeper dive. So that, that's a really good thing. And contact tracing is the best way to stop the spread so we, so we can find out where people are getting it in the community. So the more research we can get on that and the more information we have, we'll, we'll be better off on how to, how to shut those interactions down so we can limit the spread. I think that's all I have for you guys.
Megan, I have one question, if I may, on the contact tracing. Does that go back to each local community then? And you get that information for Harwich? You know, the other communities the same?
Not every community is the same. Some communities do contact tracing within their own local Board of Health if they have a public health nurse. Like Barnstable uses their public health nurse. We don't have a public health nurse. We have a town nurse, but she's more under the Council on Aging. If, if you are contracted with a Visiting Nurse Association, which I think they have seven or eight towns on the Cape, they have the access to the Maven system. That's the online database that tracks all of the cases. And Maven sends an email to the VNA saying, you have a case, here's the information to do the follow-up. I have access to Maven, so I also get an email. A lot of health directors don't because they contracted out and they, they rely on their VNA and I rely on them as well. But about six months ago, I requested access to Maven so I could see what kind of infectious diseases we had going on in town. So it's not across the board, but in Harwich, I do have access to that database.
Is it then your responsibility to notify the, the people or does the VNA pick that up?
The VNA does that.
Okay.
Yep. First, first, the Department of Public Health Epidemiologist makes the case active. And then within a few hours, they make sure that the VNA has seen that there's an active case and they, and that they have started the investigation.
That's good news. I'm not sure what else you could take on.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for Megan?
Larry, if I may?
Sure, please.
Megan, could you tell us how many cases there are in Harwich now?
I could. There's been some pushback. A week ago, the Department of Public Health said it is not right for the individual towns to release that information. They wanted it to stay at the county level. And then a few days later, there was another conference call and the, and the DPH said, well, it's up to the towns, town by town. I was on the fence. I still am. I don't know if that information is necessary for the public to know. I think it's a discussion amongst the selectmen and in the Board of Health if they want that information released. I don't, I don't think it should really be my decision alone. The cases are growing. We have one more case this, today than we had yesterday. At Wednesday's meeting, I had mentioned that we had more than a dozen. So if the Board of Selectmen is in agreement that that information should be released, I think I would be okay with releasing it. But at the same, in the same breath, whether we have 10 cases or 50 cases, the response is the same.
Thank you, Megan. I'll defer to your judgment. And if the Board consensus is the Board is that it wants that, then, then so be it.
Well, two points. I agree with Michael and I trust your judgment, Megan. If it, if you feel the time has become, you know, you have more town interest in it, I'd ask if we bring it back, we'll put it on the agenda and have a formal discussion on it. We don't just go, you know, see your pants judgment on it.
Sure. And just to give you a little background, about half the towns on the Cape are not releasing individual town numbers and half of them are. The larger towns, the ones with the higher numbers are releasing those numbers. It's, it seems to be the, the smaller towns have a smaller community, so it would be easier to identify who the positives are. We're in the middle. So, and I think we have a, a good amount of cases where we aren't going to go door-to-door looking for positives. So I'm really on the fence. I have gotten requests from reporters as well as the public about that.
Mr. Chairman, this is Joe, if I may. If the Board does want to take that up as a policy matter, at this point, the soonest that you could do it would be April 9th, so next Thursday. The agenda for April 7th is set. I, I don't know that it would warrant an emergency discussion.
I don't think it does. I think we have time.
I'd like to be able to put it on that agenda on Thursday, though.
That, that, Don? Don, if you want, you muted yourself, but we can, we can add it for agenda on Thursday. We, we would like, people would like that.
I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll work with our Health Director to try and get the appropriate language for the Board to, to vet that in a formal manner.
Okay. Anything else, questions, Megan? As usual, Megan, thanks for the updating and great job.
I'll stay on through a public forum, public comment in case the public has questions.
Thank you. Joe, I'll turn it back to you. I think next on the agenda is discussion between you and the chief.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So trying to come up with a broad enough topic based on the discussions earlier this week about staffing and generally as it relates to public safety. So Chief Gilmet is here and can address his memorandum that he put in the packet for the Board. I do also want to just advise the Board that the Fire Department provided a memorandum and Chief Clark has indicated that he feels that the memorandum will speak for itself for this evening. So at this point, I would just turn it over to Chief Gilmet to walk the Board through his memorandum.
Thanks, Joe. Can anybody hear me?
We can. Thanks, Joe.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of Board, I, you do have my memo. It's, it is fairly, fairly brief. I understand that, but it's fairly straightforward that, you know, I start out by saying that I know there were some questions of our staffing and I would describe our staffing at this point in time as stable. We do have one dispatch opening and we do have two full-time patrol openings. But we also have a trainee due to graduate from the Police Academy in July. Those academies are still running, so we're hoping that they will graduate that class. With that being said, you know, Dispatch does only have five people in there and one of them recently left. I believe it was in February. So we, we did look at that and took some proactive measures. And to their credit, the Dispatch has agreed to adjust their schedule, got a little creative with Lieutenant Hutton. And as a result of that, we're looking at basically two open shifts per week in Dispatch, which is not a heavy load. And the overtime spent filling those is actually more than offset by what the salary cost would have been. So Dispatch only is four people at this time. We're, we're holding our own there. As far as Patrol goes, again, I would describe it as stable even with the two openings, the two full-time openings in Patrol. Again, hopefully, trainee coming out in July. But, you know, we are, we are not really bleeding a lot of overtime as a result of those, those openings because of the circumstances we find us in, ourselves in in this crisis, which is, you know, our SROs are available for the line. There's no court, there's no training, there's basically nothing else generating an overtime expense besides the line. So we are, we are actually spending less in overtime on a, on a week-by-week basis than we were, you know, in similar circumstances last year. So, and I, and I'd just like to also reassure the Board that we have, as soon as this jumped off, you know, continuity of operations plans were discussed at the county level and the local level and amongst the chiefs. And we understand that, you know, even though we have not been severely impacted by illness or quarantines at this point, that that can change at any time. And we do have a plan in place to address that, you know, for as long as it, as it will hold, depending on how bad it gets. And, you know, I can get into more specifics on that if you, if you'd like, but I don't really think it's necessary. We do have a plan in place. And I think that's about it. And, so, questions?
Questions or comments, questions for Chief Gilmet?
Larry, if I may?
Michael, please.
Chief, could you just, and not tonight, I'm sure you don't have it with you, provide an overtime, an estimate of the overtime that is happening in there? And then for right now, could you give us a sense of when you'd be looking to fill the dispatch position? And then if we did lose another dispatcher to illness or anything, how long would it take to hire a dispatcher? Those are my two questions. And then, and then just the parting comment is if we do have to pull a patrolman off of the street to do dispatch, it's my belief that they'll get their detail rate, which is about $50 an hour, correct? Or overtime rate?
It, it would be overtime rate, I believe. That's correct, Michael. So I do have, I do have the overtime figures for you. I can, I can email you the spreadsheet that Kay put together that does show the overtime expense out of Dispatch. Patrol is a little bit more of a moving target and we're not going to be able to nail down how much because of the circumstances we were looking at right now. And one of the other factors I didn't mention is we're also, we're still on off-season staffing as well. So there's a number of factors that make it difficult to try and nail down what those patrol openings are. So, but I understand you're, you're looking at Dispatch and your, your question is, you know, if a patrolman or sergeant has to fill some, an additional opening in Dispatch, yes, it would, it would most likely start costing more. And as far as when we would like to hire, as I mentioned, I alluded to in my memo, you know, I don't, I don't have an issue with, with looking at starting the process, but there's going to be some challenges as far as field training, which even in Dispatch, which requires being inside that, that social distance. So that's, that's probably going to be one of the biggest challenges for that.
Thank, thank you, Chief. And at this point, I'm, I'm not concerned with patrolmen, especially since you said you've got one coming out of the academy and that you have no court. So that frees up our court officer and the SRO. So I'm very comfortable with that. I do think, or at least my recommendation to the Board would be to start looking through the dispatch process because that's going to take a, a long time. And maybe the, maybe if we just identify somebody and then the field training goes in. But I think it's going to be a substantial cost to the town of Harwich if we start pulling patrolmen off the street to do dispatch at, at their overtime rate. And I think if we are planning to hire a dispatcher, I don't see why we would wait until we absolutely need it instead of starting the process now. But thank you for the memo, Chief, and the update.
Other questions for the Chief?
Mr. Chairman, could I just add a comment as, from administration?
Yes, Joe.
Thank you. So this topic obviously raises the question of how the town would initiate hiring process. So Bob Lawton and I have been working on a process that I hope to be able to finalize as early as next week, trying to leverage social distancing while getting a program in place where we can at least initiate a hiring process, focus on essential needs that, that we recognize now or may, may become available or noticed to us in the short term. And as Chief mentioned, beyond obligations for training requirements and things like that, at this point, the only difficulty with the general concept of the hiring is if a situation or position requires a, a more direct conversation than remote conversation. So staff has been working on that this week, hope to finalize something as early as next week. And I also know that the MMA is hosting a webinar the week of April 6th on this topic. So hopefully, we can rely upon MMA and others for some suggestions as to how other towns are going to do it. So more, more to come in the short term.
Other questions for the Chief? Chief, I'm, I'm comfortable with what you put forward. I was looking at it probably similar to Michael, but slightly different direction. One was concerned with the short term and then longer term. And it sounds to me that in the short term, because you have backup plans in place that were covered there. And then, then the issue is, is be sure that we have a long-term process going forward, which you and Joe have obviously started to work on, that when we come out of this, we, we come out of it as close as we can being fully staffed.
Right? Yeah. The, the, that's the whole thing about continuity of operations plans is, you know, hiring new people is usually not an option because it's too late. And especially within public safety, it takes too long from point of hire to when they actually start impacting, you know, your line operations where they can help out.
Okay. Who didn't talk, Don or Steve or Ed, do you have a comment or question before we move on?
I'm good.
This is Steve Ford. I just appreciate the memo, Chief. It, it really helped to line it for us.
Okay. Thanks again, Chief.
You're welcome.
Moving on then to the new business.
So, Mr. Chairman, you do have public forum identified next. However, there are at least, there are at least five other items that require action by the Board. But I didn't know if, if the Board wanted to hold open public forum until you've gone through your, your action items, which would be consent agenda and three items under new business.
That's good. That's your action first because I think they're all short. So let's do that and we'll come back to, if that's okay with you, Scott, we'll come back and do the public forum at that point.
Yeah, thanks for asking, Larry.
So then, Mr. Chairman, the agenda goes to the two consent, consent agenda items that are listed there.
Can I have, Steve, you want to just read the consent item?
Sure, sure. Consent agenda, item A, vote to nominate Jennifer Harrington, Animal Control Officer, as Animal Inspector for the town of Harwich.
Is there a second?
I must go to second the whole thing if you wanted to read everything.
Okay, I'll, I can do B as well. B, vote to reappoint Jaclyn Edson as Harwich's representative for the KIC Commission effective April 25th, 2020 through April 24th, 2023.
Second.
My only comment on this is we did get a, an email from Jackie this, later this afternoon. Apologize for not being here, which not, doesn't need apology since we're all, no one's there, right? Except for you, Joe, and Scott. But offering to some later date when we're back to more normalcy to come in front of the Board and just talk about what's going on with the, with the county, her role and her, her actions. And so we'll keep an eye on that and invite her back at a later date.
Larry?
Michael?
I spoke to Jaclyn today. I called her to kind of phone interview her and really the same information that was in the email, strong desire to continue as our representative. And I also asked that she put something together. She mentioned that there was not a whole lot going on, on the commission level because there's no large construction projects in Harwich, but said some regulations were changing that could affect Harwich. So I asked her to put a quick note together to the Board that we could read to the public and to the Board.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. We'll follow up on that then. Any other discussion? We have a motion in a second. I'll do a roll call so we know that we voted. Ed, I'll start with you. Steve?
I, I. Hi.
Mike? Michael?
Hi.
And I'm a I. Thank you. We'll move then to new business.
Mr. Chairman, there's a, what I would refer to as a scrivener's error, if you will, in the agenda. So item A talks about, as Selectmen Ford and McManus had asked before, the opportunity for the Board to weigh in on the merits of a proposed non-binding ballot question. The second item, item B, is a more procedural and legal action of the Board to take an affirmative action to place the ballot itself on the question, excuse me, the question itself on the ballot. Sorry about that. So that however way the Board takes it, whether they discuss the question itself and where the Board stands as a Board or individually, the second item is the most important. So I would recommend that the Board go through the formal practice to take item B first. It would be appropriate for a member to make a motion to place the question as presented in the public petition on the ballot for what we now know to be the June 30th, 2020 annual town election. And then if there's a second, the Board is not compelled to add the ballot question like you would a petitioned article. But it's appropriate that if the Board wishes to place it. Um, but it's appropriate that if the board wishes to place it, that there be that affirmative motion and action. So I would recommend that the board take item B first. Uh, the scrivener's error is that it indicates discussion and possible vote to place the following question on the 2020 annual town election ballot, and then the, the question stated above, not below.
Okay. But, but just for a square, my clarification, our, our decision tonight is to either place it on the ballot or not. We're not making a, uh, a judgment on whether we agree with the, uh, the question or not.
Well, well, you could. That's what item A technically gets you. The, the items were mixed up.
Larry?
Chief.
Steve Ford.
Go ahead, Steve.
I don't believe we were asked, uh, and Diane Turco, I believe is on the phone, uh, probably muted at this point, uh, who presented this to us, uh, along with Elaine Dickinson. Um, I don't believe we're asked to necessarily voice our opinion on this. It is more, uh, along the lines of getting it on the ballot so that the people, the residents and voters of the town of Harwich have an opportunity to voice their opinion. That's really what the initiative is all about. Um, and I can tell you that all the towns but Barnstable have voted, uh, affirmative on this on Cape Cod and, uh, Barnstable is voting, I guess, later in, in the month or something. So, but I believe the only intent is to, uh, have us vote to, uh, put it on the ballot.
Thanks for that clarification because I, I'm comfortable with the vote on the ballot. I'm not, for me personally, I'm not as comfortable going beyond that at this point.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, what, what would be appropriate then is if you redirect your attention to item B, where it would be a discussion and possible vote to place the following public advisory question on the 2020 annual town election ballot, then read the bold language that you see under item A into the record. So that would be the, the action that the board should go through.
Yeah, okay. Do we, Don?
Yeah, before we get to a point of a motion or anything, I, I just want to weigh in on the fact, without talking to the merits of, uh, uh, the shutdown mechanism and what should be done for public safety, uh, I think that the language itself on this ballot, even though it's non-binding, is defective. It directs the Board of Selectmen to take an action and you cannot direct the Board of Selectmen. You can encourage them, you can in, uh, authorize them, but you can't, uh, tell them they have to. And it's generic. I noticed that it was just a fill in the blanks, but everybody got the same basic language.
Uh, Larry, could, could we, uh, bring in Diane Turco at this point?
I would, I think we should. If, uh, Scott, if you can arrange that.
Sure, I guess I hope, uh, she's listening on the telephone and Diane, if you are, you can hit, uh, star six to unmute yourself.
Oh, hi, I'm here. Yeah. Hello?
Yeah.
Oh, good, good. Yes, this language was, um, it, it passed all the other towns, except Barnstable, they have a fall election, so theirs is pending, but all the other towns, uh, use this language. Issues.
Yeah.
In fact, they do know what some people.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm just reading the language that Don referred to. Uh, Don, you're saying that that's, if a town votes, is that the same as directing the, uh, Board of Selectmen to do something?
It is.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I apologize, but, um, in your packet, you see the recitation of chapter 53, section 18A. Uh, that comes from the election laws of the, of the Commonwealth and it discusses, uh, this type of question. As you can see in the headline of section 18, this is a non-binding public opinion advisory question that would appear on a local ballot. So the emphasis is on non-binding, public opinion, advisory. Now, the, I, I emphasize those words for two reasons. First, um, whether there's a, a concept of defect under law, the petitioners have wide latitude to put, uh, just about whatever language they want, uh, in their, in their petition, but that's also why the board is not compelled to place it on the ballot. Um, whether it's placed on the ballot or not, that's awesome. Um, sorry about that. Um, whether it's placed on the ballot or not, um, if it's placed on the ballot and it passes regardless of the quantum of vote, it still remains non-binding. It cannot compel the board to take any action whatsoever by its very nature. So there are two distinct traits that are going on here within chapter 53, 18A. The first is that the board, even though it's a petition, is not legally compelled in any way to add it to the, to the, um, uh, town election warrant, um, for discussion, but if it is added, it cannot have any legal effect to compel the board to do anything by its very nature under the statutes.
Mr. Chair, that's, and that's the conundrum I have. The, I know it's advisory, but the language uses the word direct, which is a synonym for require, and they can't, they can do neither with an, uh, advisory opinion.
Well, it looks like we have to.
Mr. Chair.
I, I would entertain a motion and then we can decide on, looks like it's a judgment call.
I mean, the, is there another word? I just do know that this word has been used by all the other towns. Um, and Brewster had it go through the legal, um, committee, their legal person.
But I'm assuming our legal counsel hasn't vetted it.
Uh, no, counsel has vetted it. Uh, John George, John Georgia and I have had this discussion and, uh, that's what allows me to speak to 5318, not as a, not just as a former clerk, but in, uh, conversations with counsel. It is appropriate for this matter, uh, to be put on the Selectman's agenda for your discussion, but there's no compelling, uh, action that is required to occur. It is a choice of the board.
Thank you.
Uh, if I may, just to add further, Mr. Chairman, however, because it is a petition, the question would have to be presented, uh, as it is outlined in the agenda, which was how it was taken from the petition itself. If the board is inclined to add it, the board cannot change it in any way, shape or form, unless the board wants to take the action of creating a binding question, which is, you could not do this evening.
Right. Uh, Steve, do you wish to, uh, give a go at a motion on this and we can decide what we do?
Sure, I, I'd, I'd like to, uh, place the following question on the 2020 annual town election ballot, and I, uh, assume from Joe that I should read it in its entirety, so I will.
Including. Uh, Steve, if I'm, I apologize, including the opening section that is in bold, that phrase of this question is not binding must appear on the ballot ahead of the question.
Okay. Uh, so I begin with, uh, this question is not binding. Uh, shall the town of Harwich direct the Board of Selectmen to communicate to Governor Baker and the state legislature with respect to the pilgrim nuclear power station on Cape Cod Bay, that the governor and the legislature will employ all means available to ensure that one, spent nuclear fuel is secured in better quality dry casks and hardened onsite storage, and two, spent fuel pool and casks are protected with heightened security to prevent intrusion in order to protect the health, welfare and economic interests of the town of Harwich, its inhabitants and its visitors.
Uh, you need to continue.
Uh, yes or no?
Is there a second? Okay, Ed, second, is there more discussion? Uh, Don, I, you, uh, and, uh, Michael, you have a discussion?
Yeah, I'm just going to say, um, direct me or not, I would support this.
Okay, I think we've, uh, Diane, any, uh, final words or we raised, raised our vote?
Well, I don't know if anybody has any specific questions, but, um, if I could just take a minute to give a little background on this.
Go ahead.
All right. Um, you know, we all know that pilgrims sat down a year ago in June, but the dangers there have not gone away. And this is a very important question because we need to keep the public engaged in, um, protecting our community, our beautiful community. And so this has given the public an opportunity to raise their voices once again and make sure they're being heard. Uh, again, all the other towns on the Cape have, have supported this unanimously. So we're hoping that Harwich, my hometown, um, follows, you know, suit and, and gets this in front of the people to keep the conversation and the pressure on to make sure that the decommission of pilgrim is as safe as possible. And you all know that Attorney General Mara Healy has filed a petition to intervene in the, um, in the sale of whole tech from Entergy due to health, safety and economic concerns. And that is still on the table. So this is going to help support, um, a safer decommissioning.
Thank you, Diane.
Larry, Steve Ford, Larry, Steve Ford, if I might, uh, I, I just want to thank Diane for all of the work that she's put in, uh, for so many years now, trying to make sure that, uh, the, uh, general public are protected and that the right thing is done at the pilgrim plant as we begin to dis- decommission it. Thank you, Diane.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Scott, I'm not sure you can do this, but if there's another caller, can you ask them if, this is about the only item that may be of interest, if, if their caller pertains to this?
I could try sending them an email right now, Larry, and ask them. I don't see anybody else is dialed in, or I have opened up the meeting if that, uh, caller wanted to join.
I, I thought there were two people at one time on the line. That's fine. We have a, uh, motion in a second then, all in favor, and I'll take a roll call. Start with you, Ed.
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Don?
I.
And I'm an I on this, so it's unanimous vote.
Mr. Chairman, I would just ask, I would just ask that the board take, um, um, a formal action of directing staff to, um, send this question as voted to the clerk. It's a procedural item.
Do we need a motion at that then?
Or, or just a statement of direction?
Well, I think, uh.
I'd love we direct staff to send this ballot pressure to the clerk for inclusion in the 2020 annual town election ballot.
Second?
I second.
Hey, Steve has a second. I'll go and do a roll call, Paul, Don, I'm looking at you. Steve?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Uh, Ed?
Hi.
And I'm an I, so that's, Joe, that will do it for you then on this.
That's perfect. Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate that. Thank you, board members.
So going back to A then, I don't see any reason to discuss A, do you?
I'm, I'm not sure. If you're asking me, I would say that that's a question that the board wants to get into, but you're not required to.
I, I don't, again, Larry, this is Steve, Steve Ford. I don't think we're being asked to do that, so there's no reason.
I'd be uncomfortable taking that step, so for me, I'd rather not have that in this, there's, and Steve, I appreciate your clarification of it.
Okay.
Hey, other comments? If not, uh, we'll move on then to, uh, item C.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, uh, item C under new business is for the board to develop, um, obviously given, uh, the COVID-19 health crisis, uh, the board has been very diligent in trying to meet as often as possible. Um, there were a number of regulatory bodies, uh, given their, um, their legislative requirements to, to, to notice meetings, uh, well in advance. The schedule that you see presented in your agenda is a proposed schedule. Um, we know that these dates, um, are available and do not impinge upon the regulatory bodies. Uh, the only other thing I want the board, the board to be aware of is I'm not aware as to why that reference is there for April 24th. Uh, it's not my intent to, um, simply have April 24th to be a brief COVID-19 update, but if the board takes a moment to look at it, you'll see that the dates do jump around, but that is because we've already confirmed that we're not impacting upon regulatory bodies that have already scheduled, uh, regulatory matters. So the board can accept any, any number of these meetings, all of them, none of them, whichever the board decides.
Uh, other than comments, I'm comfortable with it. Uh, Joe, uh, I do have one question. And, uh, anyone else who, uh, probably, uh, they're more knowledgeable on this than I am, but what's our ability to have, say, this group in Macon, for instance, uh, have a, uh, basically a spur of a moment, non-decision, but an informational thing, if something were to come up? Do we get an open meeting law violations if we need to get word out to the Board of Selectmen at, at one time?
So, um, if you remember, we're still operating under, uh, Governor Baker's order on March 10th relative to the open meeting law. So the open meeting law has been, um, drastically modified, uh, in, in response to COVID-19. So the scenario that you've described would strike me as, um, an appropriate matter to be handled, uh, as an emergency meeting of the Board of Selectmen, uh, as we had done, I believe on, um, uh, I believe that was noon time on, uh, Monday, March 16th, uh, the board had met as an emergency meeting. So, um, that's always available for the board to, to convene an emergency meeting. Um, and staff will, will guide, uh, the board on making sure we have the appropriate definitions met because, uh, while the, uh, open meeting law was relaxed, the requirements around emergency sessions were not. So if something came up of an emergency nature, the board could absolutely meet within 48 hours, but the board would be compelled to, uh, at a next regularly scheduled meeting, um, to, to re-notice that agenda item for a broader discussion.
Okay.
So the, uh, the concept still stands, um, as, as originally created.
Thank you, Joe. My concern was that things are, you know, this is all moving quickly, uh, with not a hesitancy of, if you feel the need, or Chief Comant or Chief Clark feel the need to get word out to us, that we're not hesitant about doing that.
Correct. There's no hesitation whatsoever.
Any comments or questions about the, uh, proposed schedule?
Mr. Chair?
Is that you, Steve?
Ed.
Yeah.
It was Ed.
I'd love that we approve of the proposed schedule for future ma- meeting, subject to modification change or change as the ensuing developments require.
With the removal of the brief COVID-19 update?
Sure.
Second.
Hey, other discussions? And Ed, I appreciate you made the comment that this is what we've agreed, but it could change.
Yeah.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could speak, uh, uh, very quickly on this, um, this will be helpful for, uh, staff that are tied to all the regulatory bodies. Uh, we'll refer to this as, unfortunately for April, the regular, uh, meeting schedule for the Board of Selectmen for April 2020. And so that, uh, staff will know that they can work around those dates for any other meetings that may arise, understanding that emergency meetings of the board will always take precedence.
Thank you, Joe. We have a motion in a second. If no other, uh, com- comment, I'll take a roll call. Uh, Michael, I'll start with you this time.
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
And I'm an I, so it's unanimous.
Thank you. And I'll alert staff to that first thing on Monday, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, just reiterate what you said is that, uh, we do have planning, for instance, Board of Health, uh, Conservation are trying to meet so they now can have some, some hope for schedule in their meeting so they don't conflict with ours, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would remind the board that you can now go to, uh, agenda item, old business, item C, open public forum, if you think it appropriate.
We'll pause for a, a minute or two, Scott, and see if anyone, uh, emails you.
I did have, uh, one other person email me, so, uh, maybe I'll, I'll formally, uh, open up the meeting, uh, to that individual or anybody else who does want to, uh, send an email and request to, uh, speak.
Okay.
Uh, that the, uh, the, the meeting caller information was on top of the agenda, uh, and again, I, I have one person, so we'll give them a minute or two to dial in.
All right. While we're waiting for a possible, uh, call-in, uh, why don't we, uh, attend to, uh, the, uh, Selectman's reports? Uh, Ed, you have anything to add to the Selectman report?
Well, yeah, um, earlier, uh, in the meeting when we were deciding what we would take up item A, or, or what are the issues around, was raised in item A, um, our next Thursday's meeting, I believe it is, next Thursday? Yeah. Um, can we, uh, um, can somebody prepare or, or pull together the doc? Can we, can somebody prepare or pull together the document that stated the reason why the state was requesting that we go to report, making reports on a county level, as opposed to town by town, what the issues they were citing? And if there is any document or argument on the other side, what those issues are?
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, if I heard Selectman McManus correctly, we have the request of Selectman Hall to have on the April 9th agenda, the discussion of the releasing of numbers of confirmed COVID cases by town. Is that what you're getting to, Ed?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll work with staff to try and collect any and all information related to that, pro and con, and otherwise.
Okay. Don, selectmen's?
Yeah, mine would have been better at the end because it's more aspirational, but I'm going to say it anyway.
Well, we can wait. We can give you the last word, Don, if you want.
When you all leave?
Yeah. Michael?
I have no comments today.
Steve?
Nothing but to just, once again, thank Joe and all the staff at Town Hall and in the town. And especially, I want to thank Megan for the really clear and updated reports that we're having in what is really such a difficult time. And we've seen on TV so many other government entities giving their, giving their briefings and, you know, letting people know where we are. And I think we can be very proud of this town and the people who work for this town and keeping us well informed in this, in this difficult time. So thanks, in particular Megan, but all of the employees of the town.
I fully agree. And, you know, Joe's been organizing, and he and Megan have been organizing the community forum each Friday. And that's been well received, getting everyone involved. And I will point out that Joe, certainly even more so is Megan, we're not the only audience that she talks to. She's been giving talks around town, town or 18, on the community forum. So she's becoming, not that that's her wish in life, but she's become a bit of a TV star. So we'll have to, we'll have to bring her down to earth when this is over. I assume Megan, if you're listening, won't have to defend herself.
I'm listening. Thank you.
Okay. Don, let me just stop for a second. Scott, I guess we've given enough time?
I agree.
Okay. Don, the person I did before, I'm going to give you the last word. Before I get to you, I'm going to ask Joe for Town Administrator's report. Anything more to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. I said at the beginning of the meeting that there is an announcement. I've worked with Link Hooper, DPW Director, and Megan and I met with him and some staff members the other day. As I've said before, the governor has made it clear that trash services and recycle services remain essential services. So on my direction, Link has developed a very workable plan to resume recycling at the transfer station. So it's rather simple, beginning Monday, April 6th, for the regular transfer station hour, starting at 8:00 AM, in a similar manner that people would drop off their household trash. If they have recycling, they will be directed to the recycling center, where they, where we will be doing single stream recycling. Efforts were made to identify the equipment and services necessary to do that. So what that really means is folks would show up with their household trash, they would deposit it at the transfer station. And if they have household recycling, they would drive down to the recycle center, and they would put it into the roll-off. It will then be taken to a facility that handles single stream. Quite simply, single stream means all of your recycling at once. It is much more common throughout the Commonwealth and on Cape Cod. So this is a stopgap measure, if you will, for the town to remain in compliance with the governor's directive, but also ensuring a safe and easy way for people to recycle their recyclables. And so again, the resumption of recycling for the town of Howard will resume on Monday, April 6th, at 8:00 AM, and will continue for regular hours in the same time, whenever transfer station's available. We'll have more information through social media. Staff is already working on signage and protocols to initiate, but I have the assurances of Mr. Hooper that he believes this is the best plan, and I agree with him. And so we will be able to resume that on Monday.
Thank you, Joe.
It's great, Joe. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for working that out. Don, you're the selectman's report to the final.
Yeah, especially with what Megan has said, because of what we're facing. I mean, I want to step out of the selectman's role for a second. I mean, these are obviously incredibly difficult times, and we're going to be seeing even more challenges over the next two to three weeks. I just wanted to say how proud I am to be part of this board in this town and the fact, the dedicated workforce, especially the interim town administrator, he's just done an unbelievable job. I'm not even sure how he gets time to sleep. And the dedicated workforce that we have, and our health director, obviously, as Stephen pointed out, and our two public safety chiefs. We've been moving forward as a town for 326 years, and we've been doing it together. I have no doubt that we're going to get through this together. So everyone be safe.
Thank you very much, Don. Michael, I don't normally try to order other selectmen, but I want the final shot when we adjourn of your helper there.
No way. That's priceless.
Okay.
Most of you doing there?
Second, but I might say that's how I was dressed earlier today.
Okay. I'll take a roll call. This is officially the end of the meeting. Michael?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm also aye, so we'll adjourn the meeting. And thanks again, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.